I'd like to call to order the annual joint meeting between the North Smithfield Town Council and North Smithfield School Committee. Madam Clerk, can you start us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
Sorry, technical difficulties here.
Do you want to hold the mic?
No, I'm just trying to find the microphone. Apologize.
Sorry about that. Thank you for bringing us together today in the spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice out truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Oger.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here.
But roll call, please.
Chair Lombardi.
President.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. Cunnell.
Here.
Mrs. Vada called earlier and told me she wouldn't be here today. Terry Bar- uh, Mrs. Bartamoli.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation by Eden Biragad and Nick Carafell, upcoming Northern 5K. It's Biragad.
You guys want to come up and tell us a little bit about the 5K that you guys are organizing and what- what month? When is it?
Um, May 4th.
May 4th.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You got the floor.
I'm Eden Biragad and this is Nick Carafell and we're here to talk to you about the Third Annual Northman 5K Road Race being held on May 4th, 2024. Registration would be taking place in the middle school and the race will start on the road in front of Veterans Memorial Stadium and finish on the track. As in the past, we're asking for your support and your permission to speak to the Chief of Police and the Chief of the Fire Department for their assistance.
The course will be the same as it was the last two years and we will need some roads closed for a short period of time. We would also like to ask the school committee for permission to use NSCS for part of the course in the middle school cafeteria for registration. In the past, it's been very successful the last two years and we hope to keep it going as it is an event that brings the school and the town together.
Thank you. Of course, you have the full support of the school committee. And thank you very much for taking this on. We really appreciate it. And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We-
The next item is presentation of citations for recognition to the North Smithfield athletes on their state titles, the boys soccer team and the unified volley team, Mr. Biragad and Chairman Lombardi.
Thank you, Madam President. We have some citations to give out. Let me first thank, uh, coaches, Mr. Fitzgerald and Ms. Lima. Thank you very much for putting the time in for this. We also have, um, on the soccer side, Coach K. Thank you. You've done an outstanding job. Mr. Powers and Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for your time.
I- I would also like to add to that, that, um, the- in order to be successful in a fall sport, the practice, the dedication doesn't begin in September when school begins. It actually begins in June when school ends. If you don't put the work in during the summer, then you're not going to have a successful fall season. So I understand the work that everybody, that both teams put in during the summer, the dedication, uh, captain's practices, missing, missing times going to the beach with your friends, having, telling your parents you got to get home from vacation early. These are the sacrifices that you guys made, all of you, both teams, that you made in order to be successful and it paid off and I congratulate all of you.
So let me just again first recognize, um, Coach Fitzgerald. Coach for Unified Volleyball, Division 5 Championship 15. Thank you. And I see Coach Lima here. Uh, again, Division 2 Champions, uh, Coach K. Uh, again, Boys Soccer Division 2 Champions, uh, Coach Powers. And, uh, Boys Soccer Division 2 Champions, Coach Rodriguez.
For Boys Soccer, for Division 2 Champs, Gavin Antonio. Damian Arujo. And I apologize for any mispronunciation, but Ayula Awosika. Zachary Bankowit. Aiden Bienvenu. Benjamin Cabral. Lucas Como. Day Como. Judah Corovo. Noah DeRagan. Harda Dislarius. Sam Drolay. Owen Dubic. Omar Belie. Nathan Gravel. Tyson Green. Max Fawcett. Nick Lamerow. Jackson Lenka. Sam Lane. Letizia. Wyatt Letizia. Eli Lauer. Lauer. Willie McNeil. Joshua Nevs. Andrew Norwood. Wyatt Pullen. Daniel Roden. Cristiano Rodriguez. Bryce Santos. And Kayden Sullivan.
Jay Young Team. Yeah. So we had time to be going here.
You can hand them out or we can mail them. It's up to you. Great. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, for Unified Volleyball, Division 5 Champs, Division 5 State Champs, Giovanni Azavito. Owen Almido. Madison Austin. Marion Baye Wumi. Baye Wumi. Devin Bradko. Avery Burgess. Gavin Chisley. Alexis Corovo. Gabrielle Cunningham. Connor DeSousa. Ruth Diaz. Rihanna Fornia. Emma Gabrielson. Susan Gendron. Jordan Harrop. Ian March. Ryan Mulico. Emmanuel Sarkadi. And Philip Yarros. Okay, we have one more. Marion Baye Wumi.
So, uh, thank you again for coming. Uh, we appreciate it. We honor you. Uh, and we'll take a two-minute recess.
Congratulations to all.
Okay, we're back on the record. Madam President, proceed.
The next item on the agenda is joint discussion with Town Council and School Committee in accordance with the Rhode Island General Law, sixteen dash two dash twenty-one dot two C, uh, D, and review revenue and expenditure projections to prepare for the school fiscal budget twenty-four, twenty-five.
Madam President, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I'm just going to take ten minutes off the top and share some of our successes as well as the- since it's a budget discussion, ongoing budget concerns and the things that we're wrestling with, uh, not just as a school district, but also as a, as a community. And that will become clear as I go through this. Let me- move that way. Okay. First of all, some of the successes. Now, one of the things I'd like to share is that every year our students take the, RICAS test, it's grade three through eight, to measure proficiency in English Language Arts and in mathematics. This year, uh, we scored a fifty-four point three percent average proficiency. All right. So that's, that's, uh, just over half of our students are considered, uh, proficient or exceptionally, uh, over proficient in, in ELA. Now compared to the state, the state average is thirty-three percent. We're fifty-four. That breaks down to, we, we scored higher than eighty-three percent of all Rhode Island districts and charter schools in English Language Arts. In Massachusetts, they take an MCAS, which is the exact same as our, our RICAS. Their state average was forty-two percent in English Language Arts, which if we were a Massachusetts district, means that we would have scored higher than sixty-eight percent of all Massachusetts districts and charter schools. Now mathematics, uh, this year we scored a fifty-five at, uh, percent district average. It was a gain from last year, five percent gain. The state, while we're at fifty-five, the state is, uh, twenty-six point nine percent average. Uh, that score, that puts us in the top eighty-six percent of all Rhode Island districts and charters. Likewise, if we were a district in Massachusetts, we would be in the top, uh, we, we outscored seventy-seven percent of Massachusetts districts and charters. Now, that's the average from grades three through eight. We have data that looks at individual grade levels. And when we would take a look at, say, eighth grade math, uh, we were third in the state behind Barrington and East Greenwich. Uh, in all of the, uh, uh, pretty much all of the grade levels, whether it's English Language Arts or mathematics, we were, uh, ranked number fourteen all the way up to three. Uh, most of the rankings in mathematics put, placed North Smithfield in the top five of the state, uh, state district. So, and as you know, uh, we have a warning, award-winning programs in music, athletics. In fact, we just honored some of our athletes today in civics, We the People. Administration and faculty, we have many of our principals have won First Year Principal of the Year Award, uh, First Year Assistant Principal of the Year Award. We have teachers that were the state teacher of the year. Uh, you know, again, a, a very talented, recognized faculty and administrative staff. As far as the physical improvements, you've, if you've been, you're all in North Smithfield. You've been around for a while. You've seen the transmit, transformation of our schools from our new athletic field and track. Right now, uh, we have a new baseball field, uh, new throwing area to extend track and field, and we're going to be doing renovations to the softball field. Throughout the building, whole building, uh, renovations, new ceilings, new paints, uh, new floors, uh, everything is just being refreshed and updated. And most of these things, we're receiving reimbursements from the Department of Education through the, uh, Housing Authority, that we then turn around and we reinvest back in our facilities. So, on the challenging side, the, the budget side, and this, and, and to tell you the truth, doing a three-year projection is incredibly difficult. Education is very fluid and it changes from year to year. And I just want to go over some of the, 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 the things we're working out. So once again, we, we look at salaries. I mean, education is personal, personnel-intensive. Uh, it is the largest percentage of the budget at fifty-eight percent. Uh, this year, we do have a, a, a three-year teacher contract negotiation coming up. Uh, so we don't really know the full impact of the FY twenty-five budget at this time. But one of the things that I can share you is that we continuously adjust personnel based on enrollment and needs. Meaning we'll reduce where we can, but we must add where needed. For example, this year, uh, there was a- there appeared to be a drop in, in enrollment coming into the middle school in grade seven and eight. So we had three teams, uh, for grade seven and eight, and we did reduce to two teams and laid off a English Math Science, Social Studies teacher. Because with two teams through grade seven and eight, we could, uh, meet the contractual class sizes. And again, we adjusted where the enrollments allow us. However, we also had to add a kindergarten class. And even looking at next year, we have more kindergarteners now than we've ever had before. And we may have to go up to seven kindergarten classes next year, add another first grade. So again, we reduce where we can and we have to add where, where, where it's needed. Health and medical, and again, from the town side, you, you, you understand that that can fluctuate, uh, as well. Uh, but we also have some changing demographics within the town. We do, and I'm, I'm going to switch over to some enrollment charts, uh, to show you. We have an increase in enrollment, increasing enrollment, uh, last year and especially this year. And that's even before we start factoring in some of the planned housing developments in town. Uh, the, a couple of twelve-unit con- uh, twelve to twenty-four unit condos. There's a, a hundred twenty-four, uh, single-family houses, which are, are also in the planning. So all of these, all of the housing is going to have an impact on our schools, uh, in enrollments. And that's something to take a look at moving forward. We do have an increase in students in foster care, uh, entering kindergarten with low reading levels, and we saw that throughout the pandemic. I mean, the kids that came in during the pandemics didn't have the socialization and the, uh, uh, the basic skills to start kindergarten. So they already started somewhat behind. Uh, we have, uh, our group of economically disadvantaged students. We are seeing an increasing amount of students living in trauma. And I'll show you also in some of our enrollments, uh, with a tremendous increase in students, uh, speakers of other languages. So all of which are requiring us to increase the amount of services to service more kids who require, uh, specializations. Our special ed numbers are enrolled, are, are increasing. Uh, we saw quite a, a substantial jump, uh, going into this year. We also, you know, and we try to control this as much as we can. We do have students who are in the district that have such, who are so fragile, so medically fragile, that they require a clinical or residential placements. Uh, we try to keep as many students close to home, close to us, but right now we have fifteen students that we physically cannot service their needs. And between transportation and tuition, uh, one student could cost, uh, a hundred thousand or more. All right. But we need to do what's right for the, for, for that kid. Transportation is a tough one, even with, we're looking at a five percent increase for next year. And our transportation contract, we actually, we negotiated, we went out with three different districts. It's not just North Smithfield looking for, uh, the, the good price on transportation. We combined with Barrowville and Smithfield, and the three districts went out for a joint RFP and contract to use, uh, uh, our, our increased numbers to bring down the cost. Now, a five percent increase, four percent, five percent increase, seems like a lot, but it's actually quite good compared to what other districts individually are paying, uh, uh, across the state. So we also have an increase in statewide transportation. Right now statewide transportation, that's not us. That's a state contract. All of Rhode Island uses statewide, uh, transportation. So that covers getting students to their out-of, out-of-district placements, displaced students. We transport homeless students. Uh, we do transport private, uh, students to private schools and to CTE programs all within our region. Fortunately, we have a small region here in the north. So, uh, but this, the, the, the cost for statewide transportation changes from year to year based on the students, the placements and the transportation needs. Uh, right now, we're projecting a twenty-one percent increase. All right. So I know Jean. That's the face I make every day. So, and then we have our general cost of living and inflation, you know, which affects insurances, utilities, vendor services, contracts, licensing, classroom supplies and technology. We also have state-educated mandates. So we're still wrestling with some of the changes that are going to come our way, uh, through a revision of the Rhode Island diploma system and graduation requirements. That's going to affect scheduling. That may affect some staffing. There's, there are quite a number of new additions. I mean, they're, they're quite good. There's there there are quite a number of new additions, I mean, they're they're quite good. But we have to all work together to figure out a way to deliver the uh new services and the new requirements in a way that's fiscally responsible. Number of years back, the uh General Assembly passed the Curriculum and Implementation Accountability Act. Which stated that uh districts had to offer high-quality curriculum in English, Math, Science, Social Studies. And they went through and they vetted all the different curricula out there. And there is a green list of good curriculum to use. And we all had to switch over to those on the green list. To date, we have spent four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to purchase new curriculum. Because of the educational accountability. So, but fortunately. With the ESER funds that came through and a CLSD grant. It was able, we were able to use that grant money and not local funds, operational funds. Or go to the town council saying, hey, we need more money to do X, Y, Z. But we're able to do it within the grants. Additionally, a number of years back, the uh General Assembly pla- passed the Right to Read Act. Uh, which, again, I'm not arguing, it's fantastic. All of our teachers are getting intensive training in the science of reading. It's been wonderful, it's been expensive, it's cost a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And again, we've been able to leverage ESER and CLSD in order to pay for it. As rather than go back to the town and say, hey, we have these unfunded mandates, please help us. Uh, athletics is uh. We will talk a little bit about that later, uh, athletics is. You know, to be honest, uh. We offer more teams and opportunities of pretty much any school or district our size. I think it's wonderful, you know, I want to continue to expand, to give the students as many opportunities as possible. But with the understanding that with that comes a cost. So, there is the pressure to maintain and expand the current level of interest, inter-school activities. In fact, uh, we're looking forward to next year, we're adding uh uh women's hockey, you know, to 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 the roster. So, uniform replacements, now we've. Uniforms are expensive. With all the teams that we have, uh, we have to keep renewing and refreshing uniforms. And we've had numerous long conversations uh um at the school committee meetings and presentations and reviews. Uh, but what I can say is that. Normally, within the budget, we would have had ten to fifteen thousand dollars in the athletic budget for the uniform replacements. We offer so many teams and so many kids are calling out for teams that uh it's outstripped the budget. So, the school committee last year authorized using some additional funds from the fund balance. To start accelerating the replacement of uniforms. Uh, this year, we're going to continue and do the same thing. So, this uh uh last season, we we replaced all the, or upgraded all the uh the boys and the girls. Uh, uh, basketball uh at the middle and the high school. Uh, and keep in mind, when we're talking about uniforms, uh, a number of the teams have multiple uniforms. You know, they have home uniforms and away uniforms, and you know, so it just continues to add to the the cost. Uh, I will be, and this is a surprise for the school committee. And either at the next meeting or the meeting after that, I'm going to go back to you. And look to use uh some of the fund balance to really push and make a a a huge push into the speak spring sports. Uh, for the uniforms, uh, we we need to, we need to catch up. And then we need to be on a uh a sensible replacement plan. And not have something that keeps getting kicked down the road because there are budget cuts elsewhere. And just to also note on state aid to education. You know, there is a funding formula and but. You would think that state aid to education would be predictable every year, but it's not. So, when we factor in. The next year's budget, and when we do our three-year projection, we're figuring level funding state aid. All right, so if we're going to ask for something for the town and we're thinking level for state aid. When we get new state aid, we reduce that ask from the town. But right now, we don't know what that state aid would be. However. The good news, or not. Depending what side of the fence you're on. We did get a large increase to state aid to education last year. Because we were one of ten districts that actually had an enrollment increase. That was last year. This year, in October one, these are all the numbers from October one of each year. This year, October one, we, well, last year, October one, we had sixteen nineteen, one thousand six hundred nineteen students, PK through twelve. This year in October, we had sixteen sixty-three. Okay, quite, quite an increase. I also, just for fun. Uh, put in the numbers from October first to today. Just to show you, even in the month, month and a half or so. We're right now, as of today, sixteen seventy-two, all right, started. Last year sixteen nineteen, October sixteen sixty-three, right now sixteen seventy-two. When we break it out and we look at out of district, right? In October, we had fifteen students, high-cost uh special ed uh tuition, transportation. One student did move out of the the district, out of the town, so we have fourteen right now. But again, we continue to try to keep our students close to home, in their homeschool, with their uh. In their neighborhoods, in their community. Transition students, these are s- uh special ed students who are with us until at least the age of twenty-two. So we have se- seven students there. Services, uh, these are walk-in students, uh, these are the the, they live in the community and they come in for walk-in services. They're generally pre-pre-school. Uh, uh, and you know, but and and we start early childhood services, uh, really as soon as we can. The number of students with IEPs, all right, last year, two hundred thirty-seven. This year, a substantial increase to two hundred ninety-seven students who qualify for. IEPs, two hundred seventy-nine students who qualify for IEPs. Just since, as of today, just since October uh one, we now have two hundred eighty-three students. And again. We are getting more students who are moving into the district or who um come in with uh uh IEPs that we we honor. We have a lot of students living in trauma. We have anxiety, mental health issues, and it's just continuing to increase. Uh, and yes, and they do qualify for IEPs. For English language learners. If you look back in uh seventeen eighteen, we had fifteen. Eleven, ten, now we start jumping at least five every year. All right, now we are up to thirty students um who need to learn English. Uh, before they can really dive into the curriculum. Our five oh fours, special accommodations for students, uh, last year, we're ninety-nine, this year, one twelve, as of today, one twenty. Homeschooling requests. Uh, as of uh uh. And you can see during the pandemic, homeschool requests were very high, then we just dropped back to normal. Twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, right now, we're at thirty-two. And I made a note, um, four of those students, i- it's a family that moved into town and they've always homeschooled. And then we have our non-resident students who are attending our high school CTE programs. And right now, we have thirty-one students from other communities at North Smithfield High School. Uh, in our music, our business and our engineering programs. And for us, they pay us tuition. All right, so that's actually revenue. And you'll see that when we switch over to the other one. But again, I I won't go through all of these, you know, the the entries, the withdrawals, but you, but basically. I'm just gonna bring one slide up there, this is from the, from Nezdek, who does uh uh. Enrollment projections for pretty much all the districts uh uh in the state. This is just K to twelve. And they look at births, they look at home sales, they look at a number of things. And Nezdek is projecting us. To continue to increase population. Now. Just to show you, and and I'm gonna, I I have some questions for the demographer uh uh on this. And so I haven't put this up on the website, I've released it yet, I wanna, I wanna talk to the uh the the demographer first. But. It's good information, but what I wanted to show is that. From the US Department of Education. This is the number of students in public schools. And public school enrollments are basically declining. Across the board, across New England, across the country. Now, Rhode Island, they're looking at a, you know, a debt for the next decade, at least a six percent decrease. In public school uh population. Now go back and remember the chart I showed you for North Smithfield. Rhode Island is dropping, North Smithfield is growing. Which is a testament to. Living in North Smithfield, it's an attractive place, families want to come and move. All right, and so that gives, that brings us to the three-year projection. And again. It, this is so hard to project out, uh, because it it, there's so many things that are such a moving target. But. We factored in as much as we could, and yes, if you look at the uh uh total revenue and. Um, I mean, we've increased things like tuition for CTEs. But. If you look down at the end, I mean, w- we're essentially, and don't panic, it says a uh uh the percentage for the town. Oh, here it is. Year one, three point nine, year two, four percent, year three, four percent. But remember, we don't have state aid to education. And anything we get in revenue, anything that comes in, we try automatically reduce it from whatever we want. We ask for the town. We've tried to keep, we we understand the burden on the taxpayer, we understand the expenses. Um, and we will continue to try to deliver. A good, solid education and programming for the kids. In a way that is reasonable to the rest of the community.
Thank you, Superintendent. Hmm, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just have a couple of quick questions that I don't understand. Um, uh, one of them was the ESER funds for the in, for the curriculum. Was that a one-time?
Yes.
Curriculum expenditure, it's not a recurring expenditure?
This is why we 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 try to use ESER in a way that. Gave us the biggest bang for the buck and bought us some future security as well.
Okay.
Now, we do have some more curriculum to buy. This is the last year of ESER.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Um, then the other thing is the increase in the uh CTE tuition. Are you expecting an increase in the tuition reimbursement? Or the number of students that would be participating in that? Oh, both, okay. So you see an increase in a, you probably see more students coming.
Yeah, because the the annual cost of education, average cost of education goes up.
Yeah.
All right, and now we do have a deal with our uh consortium.
Right.
Um, Smithfield, Barrowville, Lincoln, Cumberland, North Providence has joined the party. And we, when our students go to each other's Cumberland. When our students go to each other's CTEs, we just charge each other a flat five thousand dollars. When they come to us from other districts, they get charged a full amount. The full amount, fifteen, sixteen thousand?
I have one more quick question about capital outlay, and the only reason I want to bring it up is because we had a meeting with the Budget Committee. Few days ago, feels like forever ago, but. Um, and we just want to make sure that any capital expenditures you anticipate over the next year or two or three. Are communicated to them so that they can prepare us, you know, so. I think one of the things that they mentioned, um. From last year was that there were some expenditures that they didn't expect. Um, and maybe you didn't either, so just to keep that line of communication open so that they can assist. You know, in preparing a budget for us and, um. And we're gonna be doing the same, you know, if there's anything that we anticipate happening down the line in the next year or two, I'm gonna make sure that they.
Well, a- and and I could follow up, you know, I I would have liked to like to know the uh the specific. As far as what was maybe discussed that wasn't planned out, I know.
I, they, that wasn't mentioned, right? In particular?
I think it just goes back to the last budget, when uh they were kind of wrapping things up, and then there was like. Over like, I think it was some crazy high number, and they were like, there was no dates, there was no time, it was just like a list. And they were just trying to figure out, I think they met back with the school committee. And they said, maybe the budget committee and the school committee can work together to try to figure out how to fund these things. But I think it was just trying to get some insight into like, you know, if there's any um like capital improvement plans or schedules or timelines on any of those things. I think that's kind of where it was coming from.
So I I think I might be able to lend a little uh information on that. So we we, I I assume where it came from is, we come to you and say, we need certain capital items. Over the next year or two, or whatever it is. Um, I think the budget committee was having discussions in regards to our surplus, saying, well, maybe we can, they don't need all this surplus. They, uh, maybe we can divert some of that to ongoing budget, whatever it may be. So I turned, and so I went to the chairwoman and said, I just want to let you know. We're not asking for more money, what we're telling you is, these are the projects that we need to do. And we might have added a roof on and different things, just saying, we don't have excess cap. It was, it was as simple as, we don't have excess uh surpluses. We have everything targeted out as to what, you know, we're gonna use it for, and we explain that to you. Um, and I know that maybe they go, well, maybe we can put one of these on the back burner and use it for the budget. And although I I disagree with that, if you put one thing on a back burner, you have fifteen others that we can still do. That's, that's the only reason I was doing that, I think that was a conversation between the chairwoman and myself through email. Um, if she misunderstood, you know, I I apologize, but it was only to say, we don't have any excess surplus per se. Not, this is our projection.
I I think it's helpful for the budget committee and the and the council to to know the types of projects that you guys are facing. I think it's definitely an important piece, whether timelines can be discussed and all that, but I think it definitely helps so that. You know, we can assure you there's appropriate levels of funding and stuff like that, and you know, we're not scrambling, so.
This is actually a worksheet of the projects we have coming up this year and into next year. And we we do have these, you know, but sometimes they're on a sliding scale. Uh, for example, uh, on our project sheets. Replacing the turf field was on there for six years, and it just kept getting pushed down, back, 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 until we had. Um, COVID, we's had some savings in transportation, and we used our funds to replace the field as opposed to. Um, you know, going to the town for capital, so, oh yeah, uh, we have this information, you know, so it's.
And then I'd really like to know why we can't do it in Mass and in Connecticut. They have fees for transportation, they have fees for pay-to-play. And if you base it on twelve months, it's nominal, none, oh, bear with me, it's, it's cheap. Um, for for transportation in Massachusetts, it's three hundred dollars per student. Based over payments of twelve months. And if anyone cannot afford twenty-five dollars a month, they get local businesses or individuals. A- and they get a a sponsor for that. In sports, it is again, for not for family, for students, three hundred. And uh, that's again, twenty-five dollars per sport, which isn't outrageous. Eh, except for hockey, which is seven hundred. Which equates um to about fifty, what, fifty-five, something like that. Um, and they're able to keep it. Um, and they're able to keep it at at that level. And most parents and, you know, uh in Westminster in that area. It's not a wealthy area, trust me, there's two schools together. And lovely school, uh Oakmont High, if anybody you are familiar with that part of the country. And then friends in Connecticut and his, the son did uh what, three sports, et cetera, and uh. Now he's in college there. And again, they only charge a hundred for sport. Which is like. Nothing, but it did help. For transporting because it's very rural where they are. And this is a state practice. Why can we not do this in Rhode Island? And should we go to our people and say? You either give us more money. So we can be the best or. Fees.
That's the state level, that's, that's nothing that we can control, so. So if you don't.
They took it away, but the the this is, I think it's ridiculous. They don't give you enough and they want you to keep paying more and more on other ends that other local um. Well, other neighboring states are doing.
Uh that's a co- across the board, though, it's unfi- unfunded mandates. Across the board, well, right across education.
In in Rhode Island, but.
Right.
You don't, it's they're they're doing this in Mass and Connecticut.
Well, and 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 on top of that, I mean, and and one of the things I didn't mention is that um. Just the salaries for uh. Uh refs have gone up.
That one.
Um athletic trainers, I mean, there's a bill going through right now, it's going to require an athletic trainer at every game. First of all, there aren't enough athletic trainers in the state, and then it's then becomes the matter of the budget. Um, and on top of that, our. We saw some of our wonderful coaches here, we're one of the lowest paid in the state, we need to take, we need to also factor in um coaching stipends.
And for our our physically very fragile that. Uh, I understand that. And they need placement.
Hmm.
Uh in in special. Uh facilities. Again. There should be a formula for this.
There's actually the um um Rhode Island Superintendent's Association is working to. Uh with legislatures to make adjustments to the funding formula to. Uh pick up more of a share of the high cost special education and transportation. Uh, there are other things like statewide transportation I mentioned, it's, it's in the law, you have to use statewide. Uh. That that it's written that you have to use statewide. Um, however, we're, we're working on and getting a change. That you use statewide unless you can do it for less money on your own. At which point then we turn to our local transportation companies to see if we can undercut what statewide charges. So there there are some push pushes and changes for in the funding formula. To accommodate um speakers of other languages and I need special education because you are correct. There are so many unfunded burdens that are placed back on the districts and the communities that support them.
And. I'd like to make a comment, we we have um Mayoral Academy, et cetera. When we get students from One Socket or other places. Um. They may have, so they're learning disabilities. Special needs, et cetera. But in the Mayoral Academies, they or in in the other school in One Socket. They do not. Have. Students. With emo- you know, with emotional problems, behavioral problems. And they don't have. Special ed classes as we do with less and more intensity.
Well, they they do, but it's, it's. From the district level, we offer larger and more services.
Right.
You know, uh, you know, when you get into a charter, it's a smaller organization and, you know, really doesn't have that.
Right, but it is a, it is a public school.
It is a public.
And it does have a special ed. Department, it has a speech pathologist, it has a. Um, a nurse full time, so it's everything, it's a, it's a smaller version of the larger.
Better.
Public school, but it does, so that is incorrect, that is incorrect.
But not as intense cases.
Yes, as intense cases. Well, they're a public school, they have to accept everyone.
There was, there was just a couple more questions from the um, from the budget committee, they were asking if we could. Get a list of the restricted accounts and what they're used for, I guess they have requests in the past years, if we can, if they can get a list of those, is that?
So, so um, Mr. Saint Jean sent a memo out in June to all of the town council members. With the um, all of the restricted funds, what they use for, identifying what they are and the amounts that matched up to the financial statement.
Can you go with that to the budget committee chair?
Sure.
So they can have that for your meeting? Um, and then also there was a question um. On the wide world um contract, they were curious as to where, what line the funds hit in your budget.
So those lines, um, all of our rental facilities go in one specific um. General fund revenue line.
Okay.
And those funds are set aside, the only thing we use them for is to pay for the um. Portages that are out on the fields.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, those funds are committed by the school committee to save for future replacement repairs on.
Sure.
So it's for future.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Lisa, how much is in that account?
Um.
Approximately.
I think it's around three hundred thousand at this point.
So we're parking that money so that a a future school committee and town council does not have to go looking for those funds or. You know, when it needs to be replaced, not look at least for, you know, the million, whatever it costs. So which one?
It's gonna be future replacement repairs or just future repairs as they come up?
The future replacement of the of the field, uh of any, I mean, uh. Um. The turf field, the track, anything over in that area.
Thank you.
I just got a couple of questions, could you, was it possible to go back to that first uh page that we saw when you started your presentation?
Oh, hang on, don't let me accidentally stop the meeting. Uh, okay, click okay. I'm just gonna switch to the screen here. This one?
Yes. Um, if you look uh. Those numbers right there, if if you weren't comparing yourself, if you weren't making comparative. Numbers to the rest of the state. Cause well, that number jumps out at you, it's fifty-four percent. It doesn't sound great.
No, it doesn't.
But then you say, oh, but compared to the state, it's well, top or whatever.
Yeah.
But don't you think we're kind of accepting mediocrity to compare or comparing ourselves to mediocrity if, cause fifty-four percent is is not, is not nice, it's not a good number.
No, it is not.
So it's not fair to say, oh, it's not, it's not as, it's, we're kinda like brushing over it, cause we're saying, it's fifty-four percent, but it's in the top. Whatever of the state, you know what I'm saying?
We're going to now turn this over to Claire, and she is going to talk to you for three hours. Uh, and deep dive into everything that this means and what we're doing about it. Alright, so.
Hold on, you know what I'm saying?
Whoa.
I do know what you're saying, and I think honestly, that's why we put the comparisons up there, because you could look at fifty-four percent and think, we are in trouble. Um, when we adopted, there were, we had new standards in two thousand nine, by the time we, you know, studied the standards and put them into curriculum. Um, and then we had an assessment that uh assessed those standards, they're higher, they're harder. The Algebra One the students are learning today is not the Algebra One we learned, that's like now pre-algebra, that's like seventh and eighth grade math. That we may have learned in ninth and tenth grade, it is just different. Um, and the other thing is, we also switched assessments, now the assessment is aligned to the Common Core standards or the Rhode Island standards. Um, but we also switched to RICAS, which is, we purchase it from Massachusetts. So Massachusetts is known as like number one, you know, is number one in the country for education, they have the most rigorous assessment. And about five years ago, we um purchased it from Massachusetts and called. Not Mass, you know, MCAS, it's now RICAS, and so. Keeping that in mind, uh MCAS has higher um cut scores. Uh, in order to be deemed proficient, so we could have the same standards as. An another state, say Maryland, but maybe our cut score is a little bit higher in order to be deemed proficient. If we went back in time to the NECA when we had. GLEs, um, the other standards, and that was, the NECA was the assessment that assessed. We had, you know, ninety percent of our students were meeting or exceeding the standards, but the standards were lower. So the standards are higher, um, we are doing well, we're, we're gaining every year. Um, one of the great things about this particular year is that we're not only gaining, but we're gaining at a faster rate than surrounding districts or the the. Or Rhode Island or Massachusetts, and that's what we wanna say, we wanna say, you know, positive trajectory at a faster rate, and so. It solidified to us that a lot of the initiatives that we put into place are working. And that we want to scale those initiatives and keep, keep moving forward.
So Congressman, I think the answer is, it is unacceptable, and we, it's not that we're backing off from moving forward. We got our foot on the pedal, we're not taking our foot off the pedal. Um, I I it's just that we need to get there.
And and I would, I I would also say that if all of us adults were right now to take the eighth grade RICAS. Our kids would be schoo- we would not be proficient. Just, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's. Our kids are operating at a a a a much different level than when we went through school.
Okay, thank you.
Be very, very brief, um, but specifically, uh, Councilman Bover, I do you have a point in particular, uh, you know, I used to be a teacher before. And I was also working in different schools, and I still teach at the at the college level, and there's an old saying, you know, you can teach the test. And so while these scores, yes, in one hand, we might, and everyone, I'm speaking to everyone too, they might like to see them higher, but the same token. You don't wanna teach the test, in other words, these um, the these standardized tests, there's a lot of criticism about, you know, just what in fact they measure. I know Claire and I have talked about this quite a lot, and I I am not a fan of the standardized test, but they're here, and they are there for comparison. I think the fact that, secondly, when we compare ourselves to Massachusetts, as I will just further up what uh. Our superintendent said, Mass is considered the gold standard, you know, I'm I'm gonna consult the Education Committee at the House. Down at the Assembly, and we look at all the states, and Mass is widely regarded as, you can, one year they may be one, one, maybe two, but they are always considered one of the leaders in public education. So our comparisons, I feel, to Massachusetts are more meaningful to against a the test. Could we go higher in those? Yes, and you know what, it would be at the exclusion of a lot of other things, you, I I've been in places where I've seen people teaching to the test. You, eh, when you teach the test, you have a lot of kids who come out who are very good at taking tests, but they're not necessarily strong. In the areas you wanna be in, more and more, we're finding out that it's those softer skills, which these tests don't tend to measure, which also have to be utilized in school as well. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, it was mentioned earlier by the superintendent, Education Accountability Act and the Right to Read Act. You know, we just said, we're, you know, we're, we're going on it, it's expensive. But there is another aspect of it, teachers have to be trained and we have to get the curriculum. As a district, we're on target, in other words, if you look at these acts, they have dates, and they are dates which are supposed to meet certain targets. We're on target, we're very close to our targets. A lot of the other districts are behind the targets, and the thing about being on target is, the idea of these acts is that you provide services to the kids. The whole idea of right to read is that more teachers will be uh educated and trained in how to work with students with dyslexia. Now, some districts, again, are way, way behind where we are, and you might say, well, they're spending the money on the training. That's true, and you know what, their students are not benefiting from having the more teachers available to them. Who have. Training in dyslexia, you know, in particular, in Gillingham, that's what we're talking about a lot, one of the things we're talking about, so. Um, it's just a point that we're on target for a lot of these things, and the numbers don't always show exactly. I I think is how well we're doing, doesn't mean, as the chairman said and the rest of the committee, we don't wanna do better, always wanna do better. But I really feel that those numbers from the uh. On the uh RICAS scores are a little misleading in terms of, it does look like it's in the middle, but it's actually, I think. Higher than that, and actually very effective, but we are gonna continue to do better. And one last little thing, I know Mr. How is talking about uh some of the things we're talking about, this concerns anyone, though. If you, these issues come up, the finance committees in the Senate and the House meet, and there are public hearings, you can go and testify and raise some of these issues and ask changes. Changes happen all the time, so if you really want to do it, uh, I mean, I shouldn't say really want to, it's it's available, it's a public, I I mean. I see, I sit on probably about fifty hearings a year, there's plenty of them, and people, everybody comes in from all over the state and puts their point out. When I say everybody, from throughout the state, so. Director, I would suggest you can direct, direct a commentary, cause changes do get made if enough voices. Um, you know, presented, I shouldn't say enough voices, if the arg, it's a right, if the strongest, if strong arguments are presented, changes are made. And I know, uh, Councilman Hamilton, you've read, you've been in the governor's office, you know what I'm talking, you've seen a lot of these hearings um from that, from the executive side, so. Um, I'm not telling you to do it, but it's available, and I would, they're always advertised. I urge you to go down.
But my uh, my comment wasn't a criticism of any of the teachers or any of the the administration, it was just. Are we settling for, we're looking at, just because it's a comparatively good number, are we, oh, look, we're top eighty percent in the state, but still it's only fifty percent. You know, I mean, I just don't want us to think that a comparative number is is acceptable when the reality is still fifty percent. You know what I mean?
I didn't think it was a criticism, I just wanted to amplify those specific points.
Okay.
Because you're, I mean, your general perspective, I agree with you, it's not, we always wanna do better, um, absolutely want to do better.
Okay.
It's never stopping proving.
When you were brought on years ago, uh, when you were a child. You took over at that time. You were in charge of curriculum training. And all of, am I right on that one?
You are correct.
At the beginning.
Yep.
Uh, with some, and and you were, really, you were a kid, uh, and you know, there are a lot of older people. But they enjoyed working with you because this lady talked to them, not at them. So that makes a team, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
And you can never leave.
Thank you, and and please know that we always want to improve, and we put, that's what, that's what we do, time. Energy, effort, blood, sweat, tears go into, um, you know, developing, looking where we are and developing initiatives to move forward. And we, we see positive projection uh trajectory, and we wanna keep going, but that is a hundred percent our goal.
Thank you. And I just a couple more, um, and I'm gonna go here right now, I know, and I'm I'm going here. Um, I, I, I drive down that uh Route Five all the time. And I'm constantly seeing parking, oh, because there's too much overflow for the the field. What's the status, is there anything going on with the parking lot expansion at the field?
Yeah, actually, uh, we have a uh, put the RFP out. We have pricing, we have the information, we're bringing it to the school committee at the next meeting. Move it on to uh you guys, uh, it is. They're looking at uh three hundred seventy-five thousand.
Oh, what, doesn't that bother you that you got a price of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or something that we were gonna get for free?
Uh, I'm just telling you, I'm not saying it bothers me or doesn't, we we.
Well, it shouldn't bother everybody.
Went through the process and, you know, honestly, you know, begin uh negotiations with um green development. I don't know, because I.
I think that ship sailed.
Well, I I I know there was a, you know, forty year. You know, tax uh, other things. We were just asked to put together the RFP, we did.
So if. Well, you know what that was for, with the breakdown, why that was so, that, cause that sounds a little, that sounds like a lot of money.
No, I'd, I'm, Alan. Do you have any additional information?
Green Development bid, other contractors didn't bid it out because they said it doesn't pay for itself. I believe Green Development's proposal, the first proposal was a forty year, thirty or forty year. I believe green development's proposal, the first proposal was a forty-year, thirty or forty-year contract. Our, our people called for a twenty-year contract and I, I talked to them just the other day. It's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because it doesn't pay for itself. To do everything you want to do at the uh, at the parking lot up there. I am going to be with that to see if we can put additional panels on other parts of our property here, you know, maybe in the high school parking lot to offset the cost. So we'll have an answer for you, you know, by the first of the year or soon after.
See, I'm, I'd be torn on that one if that came before us, because I would be torn, because I know, I see the need for it, every time I drive by there, there's definitely a need for it. And I'm definitely not in favor of whacking parents' hundred dollars parking tickets that are just going to see their kids either. But um, I'd have a hard time being comfortable saying, okay, on, on something, on a number that big, even half that. For something we were gonna get for nothing. I don't know why, see, if, if the, if the, if we followed the process when it was presented, the original time. The council or the school department wouldn't have to go before zoning, the contractor would go before zoning and try to get a variance. And then if they got it, they got it, great, if not, then we move on to what, paying for just a regular parking lot. So we should have gone forward at the time when we had the chance. Let them get, go to, go to zoning and try to get a variance, and if they couldn't get it, then, then we move on. But I think, I think we lost that a good opportunity.
The opportunity, put the same bid and they chose not to. But this was their bid, they were the only ones, I spoke to, there were four or five contractors, maybe three or four contractors that looked at it. And they all said it doesn't pay for it, it wasn't worthwhile, they suggested maybe putting more panels in front of the high school, or panels over here to help pay for it.
We, we also had to uh, go out to a architectural engineering company to create the bid specs. To put out the bid, so the other companies could take a look at it and have it as an open process.
Everybody's bidding on the same thing.
Yeah, that cost us.
It's like three thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I just have a question, with the C, CTE classes, like, you know, because the um, the enrollment fluctuates so much with, with the different class, you know, different grades and stuff. How, I guess, it's kind of a two-part question, like, how do you know where to cut off the enrollment? I mean, it's great to get the revenue in, but you also don't want to bring revenue in, that's gonna take away from-
In fact-
Students, so I have to bring in more teachers.
We had this year a very large eighth grade become ninth grade. And so there was um, not as much room at the end. And so we, we cut uh, 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 applications, I think we only accepted ten this year. There were more, and it's in the application process and there's a number of things that we look at, criteria. Uh, but we, we, we held um, with just the, the ten this year, coming in, new students. Because then, as you, you start tipping a balance, now the class sizes are getting to be such. And now we're turning up, talking about we need to hire more staff, and so it's, it's. We're going to keep it going with the current staff that we have, unless it makes sense to do another expansion. But no, we, we don't want to change the tone or um, the beauty of the high school. Uh, by just turning it into a uh, a CTE factory. So it, 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 it's, it's a, it's a close balance.
And are they here for the whole, like, they're enrolled here full-time?
Yes, yes.
So do they automatically get enrolled the following year, or is that something they have to-
No, that's right, so once they're accepted into the CTE, usually the freshman or the sophomore year. They can continue, assuming discipline, behavior, grades, all of that stuff keeps up. If, if it doesn't, then they return to their home district.
And is that busing transportation we pay for, or are they pay their-
Their districts pay to get them to us.
I was actually gonna ask about the CTEs as one of my questions and if there was ever, uh, if there is any plans to expand upon the programs you currently have. But I think you just kind of answered it.
Not at this stage, because to, to qualify for a CTE. It's just a nasty amount of work. Um, I'm not saying we're not afraid of the work, but it is incredibly disruptive. Right now, we have our, our three, we have looked at doing others. Uh, but then, again, we look at that sort of cost benefit break-even type of thing. Uh, there's possibility, there's a few in mind. But I'm not ready to say, oh yes, we're going to do that, but there, we're on the cusp of a num- of, of several different ones.
Um, okay, and then my other question is, the elementary school entranceway. Um, at the drop my daughter off every morning.
Wouldn't you like that to be wide?
It is very tight and narrow, especially playing the game of three lanes, two cars coming out sometimes in the line of buses you're behind. So is there, from a safety concern though, is there any plans to eventually expand, oh, it is on your list, okay. It just seems very dangerous.
It does, and, and, and I've said before, you know, I don't, um. I want to widen it so that at least when you're leaving, you can make a right-hand turn. To get into North Smithfield and anybody trying to turn left to go to Smithfield, they can sit in there and, and they can wait. So you know, it's just to, just to at least get some of that flow of traffic going. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's, that's something that every year where, where, we're kicking around and, but there, there's, there's Department of Transportation. And there, there's a whole lot of hurdles, but yes, it is. There's over six hundred kids in that school, plus teachers, and we have just one way of getting in and out and it's bottlenecked. Um, yes, yes, yes.
Let me just ask one more, so talking about driving by and all the traffic in the morning, so is there like any, and I know we talked about the, the busing and paying, which. Um, but is there like a, maybe like a waiver or something that families can fill out? Because it seems like we have an excessive amount of people that drop their kids off at all the schools. So, and you see the buses, a lot of them are half-empty, they're three-quarters empty, so is there like something that we can do so that we can increase the-
When Claire goes to the, the state house and starts talking about changes. We have to factor um, buses based on the population of students, not necessarily those that sign up for it.
So we could have all these empty buses, but it just has to be-
Yeah, and, and actually, the, the elementary buses are lighter compared to the middle high school buses. Uh, but we also don't run as many elementary buses, so yeah, again, we, we, we try to take that balance. Um, but there. Try to reduce as much as we can, but we do have um, uh, an awful lot of roads in town. As, as you know, because you need to constantly repave them and pa- you know, repair them, we have a lot of roads. So we require buses with longer boots, and again, we try to keep the boots, you know, so the kids aren't riding the bus all day long. So it's a, it's a balancing act.
Kim, I was one of those parents, because, because, yeah, my daughter can be home in ten minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Or fifty minutes.
Yeah.
So it was a kind of a no-brainer, you know, if we're home, we're gonna, we're gonna go get her instead of being on the bus for fifty minutes, you know?
But how much traffic do you say?
Oh, I know, I know, I agree.
Anything else?
I don't know, do a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Like to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed, the ayes have it, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.